All right. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Franklin School Committee, thank you for joining us tonight and welcome to our fifth annual Legislative Forum. My name is Denise Spencer, Chair of the School Committee. I am also Chair of the Community Relations Subcommittee. I would like to recognize and thank Subcommittee members Camille Bernstein and Al Charles for their work these past few months preparing for tonight. Tonight's forum, for those of you new here, after a brief overview from myself, followed by a statement from Superintendent Lucas Jagir, we will be asking our legislators questions. Afterwards, we will have time for closing statements from each panelist, and then we will open it up to the public for questions related to the topic of education. One focus of the Community Relations Subcommittee is public school advocacy. The mission is to promote, support, and protect our public schools and to remind the community of their importance. In our schools, children have access to opportunities regardless of their race, religion, ability, or socioeconomic status. It is our public schools that will provide the educated, innovative, and creative workforce of tomorrow, who will ensure that our nation will flourish in an increasingly competitive global economy. However, the public education system must be strengthened and supported with adequate funding. As School Committee members, we have been open and transparent about the fiscal issues facing our town. We have been asked to operate with a level service budget while costs continue to go up, while being limited by what revenues we take in. And it is only a matter of time before communities such as ours feel the consequences and gradual decline of town services. The time is now to advocate for the town of Franklin as a whole. There is a need to call attention to the unprecedented demands being placed on public schools in dealing with the mental, emotional, and behavioral health of our students. It is a societal issue. Schools should not and cannot be doing this alone. Certainly, we need financial support, but also the realization that we need other institutions to help share in the responsibility. We also need to take a step back and look at the pressures placed on our schools, increasing academic pressures, standardized testing, and so many other regulations engulfed in our schools. This is why tonight is so important, why we have our two dedicated legislators here who care so much about education and keeping our public schools strong. So with that, at this time, I would like to turn it over to our Superintendent, Mr. Lucas Jagir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. My name is Lucas Jagir. I'm the proud Superintendent of Franklin Public Schools. Thank you for everyone who attended in person and those who were online as well on that very delicately balanced laptop in front of them. It's an honor to welcome you here tonight and highlight some of the key areas.
That's even better.
Thank you. That's professional grade. Mr. Roy, thank you. First and foremost, I would like to acknowledge all and appreciate all of the hard work and efforts that our legislators have made in support of Franklin. In recent years, we, the pandemic certainly drastically impacted the way in which we do business as an organization and many other organizations as well. And with the aspects of our organization, teaching and learning, student support, student services, transportation, food services, and everything that happens behind the scenes to support our educational system in Franklin, they've played a critical role in providing the support along the way. And we're immensely grateful for what you have done. We were able to, with the support we have received, we've been able to provide stability and provide a level of service that our students deserve and certainly our community has come to expect. But the demands continue to come, and they are greater and greater each year. The federal funding we've received in the past, the ESAR grant fundings was instrumental in supporting some of our local needs. But as we know, that great funding will slowly start to sunset. Next year will be the final year for some of those supports. With those funds, we've been able to provide academic interventions to close some of those learning gaps with our youngest learners. We provided school counseling supports. We initiated and implemented a BRIGHT program, which is basically a mental health support program and a model that's research-based and exists in our Franklin High School. And we provided a DEI director to work on those DEI initiatives. So we'd like to thank Senator Roush, Representative Roy, and also Senator Stilger for their previous funding, which has supported the district in many ways with anti-bias curriculum, mental health screenings, and addressing the mental health needs within our schools. All of this additional funding is going to support a few of the areas that I would call for today for continued support in prioritizing instruction, social-emotional support, and expanding the mental health screening and supports that are very critical to the work that we do every day. I've said this before. Some folks have approached me, you know, in town, walking around, and said, you know, why don't you just focus on education and just teach students the curriculum? And I say that teachers would love the opportunity to do that. But certainly, students are coming to school every day with a myriad of challenges and areas in which they need continued support so that they can access the curriculum and be the best version of themselves in school. And I think that's the role that schools play. We've definitely become a hub. But certainly, I think we share an interest in having students who are well-regulated, able to manage emotions, able to communicate, and ultimately able to come to school to learn and access the education that they deserve. During the budget development process, we carefully assess student needs and use this lens to build our budget that best supports student learning. We'd like to bring your attention to some of the main drivers in creating some significant budgetary pressures, which include anticipated increases to some of our contractual obligations, an increase to our anticipated contracted services that occur throughout the district, an unanticipated 14% increase in tuition from private school out of district specialized placements, and staffing challenges, which we've experienced along with many other districts in the Commonwealth, and our special education support and the rising need for support for students in those areas. As we look further ahead to FY '25, we anticipate more challenges, given the continued need across the district, the exhaustion of one-time funds from revolving accounts, and a local fiscal forecast, the expiration date of ESAR relief funding. All of those things combined certainly are cause for concern and attention on our part as we start to plan and look ahead for the next years, the following years that come in Franklin. We will continue to do our best to develop budgets that address the needs of our students and meet the expectations of our community, keeping that at the forefront. Once again, I'd like to express our gratitude to our legislative delegation and for their support and advocacy, and specifically Senator Roush, State Representative Roy. We would like to thank you, and we look forward to our continued collaboration and partnership in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Jagir. Now I'm honored to introduce our panel. Senator Rebecca Roush, who represents parts of Norfolk, Worcester, and Middlesex Counties, elected in 2018. Her work has spanned both the private and public sectors, including several years of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, where she's earned a citation for outstanding performance. Her areas of expertise include health, law, and policy, information governance and knowledge management, and data privacy and security. State Representative Jeff Roy represents Franklin and Bendway, first elected in 2012 to serve the 10th Norfolk District and previously having served on both the Town Council and School Committee here in Franklin. Thank you both very much for taking time out of your very good schedules to be here this evening. And now it is my pleasure to introduce Camille Bernstein, who is going to lead our session this evening.
My dear School Committee Chair told me no ad-libbing, which means that she knows me well. She knows me well. So I keep my scraps. Okay. And you've made them aware of the time?
Yeah.
First question. As towns become wealthier based on property values and median income, the state asks those towns to step up to plate and increase their own revenues. How does this apply to Franklin? And what can Franklin do to increase their own revenues?
Mr. Franklin?
Well, listening to the comments before and listening to some of the issues that you're going through, I feel like I'm in a time warp. It feels like I'm back in my seat in the School Committee. I served on the School Committee from 2001 to 2011. And the issues that we're hearing about today very much resemble the issues that we were talking about during that 10-year span. Yes, the state, so we did the Student Opportunity Act last session to get better equality among the distribution of state funding and to balance what we're paying. And communities like Franklin, Franklin was the fastest-growing community in the 1990s. And as a result, got a ton of Chapter 70 aid. When I was on the School Committee, Chapter 70 comprised 50% of the school's budget. And I was looking at some of the graphs that you prepared, and I think it's down to about 35%, 40% at this point. So you're seeing that your Chapter 70 aid continues to go up. It goes up in smaller increments than it did, but it's still going up. At the same time, you're having declining enrollments. When I was on the School Committee, we had 6,000 kids, and I think you're just above 4,047. So you're down 1,300 kids. But your state aid has continually gone up. So what happened in the Student Opportunity Act was trying to balance that. And I have to give praise to Miriam, who did probably the most outstanding presentation on the significance of the foundation budget that I have ever seen. It was so good that I grabbed your slides. So there was a whole harmless agreement for communities like Franklin that had a lot of state aid earlier. And that meant that the state wasn't going to take back, even though your expected contribution was much greater than what you're paying. But the state decided, we're not going to penalize those communities. We're going to make them pay off that debt. It's probably going to take several generations before you pay off that debt. But you've got approximately $10 million in additional state aid, more than what you are entitled to under the Student Opportunity Act. You're going to continue to get that. You're going to continue to get the minimum amount of aid every single year, and that's going to go on until the next formula change, which is probably 10 or 20 years out. And so don't look for any additional income from the state. So how can you raise revenue? The only way I know to raise revenue is to raise levies in the community, and that's in the form of an override. And a rich community like Newton just tried to do an override, and amazingly, it failed. So people aren't fans of raising their taxes. Every time we even bring up that subject, people go crazy. So I don't envy you even talking about that. But that's the only way I can see you raising revenues at this time.
What he said. No, I don't have.
Bang!
You can see we're a great team, and we work together really well. And we do everything we can to make good things happen for Franklin. Franklin, in the money figures that we're looking at now, the projections for the fiscal '24 budget, the Chapter 70 funding is now just over $29 million in state funds. So that's a significant chunk of change. That budget debate is coming to the House floor in a couple of weeks. It'll come to the Senate next month. And then it'll go back to the Governor's desk for her signature. But, you know, that Chapter 70 money usually doesn't change very much in that deliberative and debate process. So I think that's a reasonable expectation that you'll be getting, you know, $29 million in the state funds for this upcoming fiscal year. You know, we are in the process of implementing the Student Opportunity Act and fully funding it year after year. So we will continue that process. It's consistently one of my top budget priorities to ensure that we are fully funding our schools to, you know, to the levels that the state is committed to do. And we are doing that, very proud to say that, that we have achieved those goals over the last several years with the exception of that first year of COVID, when everything went haywire. But we are, you know, back on track, although on a slightly altered schedule than what was originally anticipated. I will say, you know, I live in the town of Medham. We did recently pass an override, so it can be done. But it is definitely a challenge. It's definitely a challenge. And I will say, you know, nearly every school district that I work with, I represent 11 towns, including now all of the town of Franklin, which is a shift from last year. And I don't think there's a single town that I represent that isn't very focused on budget for a whole variety of reasons, some to a much more significant degree than Franklin, I will say.
All right, question two. When one looks at all the mandates placed on public schools in the last 20 years, we ask, how can we make our legislators appreciate the tremendous strain it's taking on our bottom line? For example, we have special education, transportation, educator evaluations, English language learners, MCAS testing, bullying prevention, curriculum requirements, staff professional development expenses, charge school, just a small sample, unfunded mandates that cost over $5 million. And the real cost is much higher when you list it all out.
So I think we do appreciate the strain. As I just said a few moments ago, all right, I am very well aware, I've spoken with, I think, every superintendent in the district, both directly and indirectly about the funding constraints for the upcoming fiscal year and for the fiscal years as, you know, as we look forward. Certainly, the 14% increase that the Baker Administration authorized as they were kind of walking out the door doesn't help matters much. And that is something that we are now in the process of, you know, that will be part of our budget deliberation, I'm sure, in terms of how to make sure that that money is there to the very best of our ability. So the crunch is not lost on us by any stretch. I will say that we, as a legislative delegation, have done a lot over the years to secure even additional funding for various aspects of the items that are listed out in the question, including $20,000 just total in the last fiscal year for anti-bias training, right? $70,000 for mental health screenings, $50,000 to develop and implement an anti-vaping, you know, vaping prevention program. I think that's back in fiscal '20. So we have had a number of different additional funding sources that we have been fortunate to be able to secure for Franklin. And we'll certainly continue to do that advocacy as we go forward in this work. And that's, of course, coupled with legislative work that we are doing. I'll say, I am now actually a member of the Education Committee, the first time that I am serving on that committee. So I'm excited about that. And I expect to hear several of you come to testify before that committee as the hearings get underway. But there are a number of different pieces of pending legislation. I'm sure, I don't know the count, actually, that's pending before that committee at the moment, but I bet it's close to 200 bills, if not more. And some of those are mine. And some of them do, in fact, pertain to improving mental health supports in schools specifically. One bill that would support one mental health professional for every 250 students in the school. Another one, to modernize the Board of Education so that we have less of a rubber-stamp board that is near fully appointed by the governor and more of an oversight board that actually has meaningful debates and assessments and, you know, constructive dialogue about the proposals of the administration. And I'll also just briefly mention the work that we have done collaboratively over the last few years with young people in the district to create a youth mental health support text align that is state-sponsored, state-funded. It's called Hey Sam! And any young person, it is peer-to-peer. It's free, it's anonymous, and it's confidential. It's meeting students where they're at, on their phone, so that they can reach another peer, another young person who can relate to them and help them through whatever happens to be stressing them out in the moment. And those are just some of the things that we are, you know, working on at the state level.
Unfunded mandates was something that I became quite familiar with during the years on the School Committee. It's a topic that we talk about quite frequently. And I think one of the things you'll notice about recent pieces of legislation, it's introduced by the phrase "subject to appropriation." So we recognize, putting these mandates in place, we have to put money where our mouths are. And I'll talk about one specifically. I know that it was something near and dear to my heart, and I know it was near and dear to Senator Roush's heart, and that was the Genocide Education Bill. We did a, that's the last mandate that I'm aware of that we passed. And we did that just last session at the end, where we dictated that every school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has to provide genocide education. And that was subject to appropriation. And in addition to the mandate, we created a Genocide Education Trust Fund. And in the budget, we funded that Genocide Education Trust Fund to the tune of $1.5 million. And of that $1.5 million, the school districts would apply for grants. And I know Franklin applied for a grant and was successfully given $31,320 from that fund. So we're acutely aware of that, and so we do fund it. And some of the other things that we fund in our budget, the Special Education Circuit Breaker, Transportation Foundation Reserve, Social Emotional Learning Grants, School Lunch Programs, School Breakfast Program, Safe and Supportive Schools, Targeted Interventions, Student Wellness Grants, After-School Grants, English Language and Literacy Programs, and School-to-Career Connecting Activities. All pieces of the budget that go over and above what we do in Chapter 70 aid and unrestricted general government aid. And, you know, for our roads and bridges, we have a Chapter 90 fund. And Franklin got around $1 million from that particular fund for roads and bridges. So we try to fund these requirements that are out there to the extent you don't think we're doing a good job with that, bring it up to us. And, you know, Senator Roush had read off some of the earmarks that we put in the budget to fill in some of those gaps. If something is not adequately funded or it's a program you want to try, we'll put it in the budget. And as a matter of fact, I handed the Superintendent some curriculum materials for what I hope is going to be a free civics program that I serve on the Revolution 250 Commission to celebrate the birth of the American Revolution. And as part of that, they were looking for a community that would pilot this program called the Massachusetts Chronicles. And luckily, they located Franklin on the map and said, we'd love to pilot it there. And so I was talking to the Superintendent about possibly bringing that program in the fall. And the beauty is, even though it has books and materials that are part of the program, it won't cost a penny. So we're constantly looking out for these things. Senator Roush and I work very closely. If I can't get something in the House budget, I'll call Senator Roush and say, hey, can you stick this in the Senate? And vice versa. And, you know, when it comes to the cutting room floor, they tend to end up in there, so.
Yeah. I'll add, that's in addition to the Civics Education Trust Funds, all right?
Exactly.
Right. So even, can I add a little additional information?
She had like 20 seconds.
So the civics education piece that Representative Roy is talking about is even, is sort of in addition to and over and above the existing Civics Education Trust Fund. That was a result of legislation that was passed, I believe, in 2018. Don't quote me on the year, but I'm pretty sure that was the year. Do you remember? No.
No, no, no.
Anyway, I believe it was 2018. And that Trust Fund has also been funded in increasing amounts every fiscal year since then. And I'm actually, my, we had a dear friend and cherished colleague retire at the end of last session who had been championing that work, including the legislation, the initial legislation, since its inception. And so I'm very honored to be stepping into that role now and taking the lead in the Senate on championing civics, excuse me, civics education across the board.
Question three. The United States Department of Education reported that 53% of public schools began the 2022-23 school year understaffed. The Commonwealth and Franklin specifically have not been immune to the impacts of national teacher shortage. What legislative action is in place or being considered to ensure Massachusetts has a robust pool of qualified teachers?
Well, I'll jump in by saying that teaching is not the only workforce that is seeing hits. You know, one of my other roles is chairing the Manufacturing Caucus, and I go around to companies all over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And their inability to staff their workplaces is incredible. It's, you know, they're going to unprecedented measures to try and attract and retain employees. So the teaching profession is no different from almost every industry across Massachusetts. I know since October of 2020, DESI, that's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has been conducting a pilot of alternative assessments for teacher licensure. So that's something that hopefully will contribute to that. And I can tell you that there have been a number of bills that have been filed in this session addressing the issue of increasing the pool of teacher applicants, the quality of teacher preparation programs, and also diversifying the workforce. Some legislation that I know I've worked on over the past in the human service sector, we are struggling to find people who will take on those jobs and who will take care of our kids and our adults and our older Massachusetts citizens. And one of the things that we did was put in place a student loan reimbursement program, which provides them money to help them pay their student loans so long as they stay in that particular occupation and do it for the required number of years. So, you know, we can look at programs like that. And finally, there's an incentive program for aspiring teachers' tuition. It's an incentive program designed to complement tomorrow's teachers' scholarship programs and attract high school students into that field. And that's a program that, if anybody wants more details on it, I have a link that I can certainly pass on to you. So it's a problem we recognize, but it's a problem that is across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. One thing you should know, 72% of every job requires some credential beyond a high school diploma in Massachusetts. It's the highest percentage in the entire United States. So we are producing, I think we have the highest rate of bachelor's degrees in the entire United States. We have a very educated and talented workforce, and we're still trying to attract more to this Commonwealth. Teaching is probably one of the most noble professions. And I know that I got involved in government because of my love for education. And I can still tell you the names of teachers who had influences in my life, even though I'm 42. You think that's funny?
Even I'm not 42 anymore.
But, you know, valuing teachers. And the bottom line, in order to attract and retain good teachers, we have to pay them more. And you folks were bold in taking a step to get more money for your teachers. And because you see that you don't want to be the training ground for other districts. You don't want to give, you know, three, four, five years of training to your teachers only to see them go to the wealthier districts that can afford them. So do take care of them, and we'll try to increase your pool of resources.
I'll echo those comments and just add that I, in fact, just saw my kindergarten teacher. Brought my kids to meet my kindergarten teacher not too long ago. And that was fun, especially because both of my kids are now too old to have been in kindergarten with her. So that, that was a whole thing.
They didn't have kindergarten in my day.
Well, we did just finally, you know, fund full-day kindergarten in other parts of my district. But I did want to just make mention of two things. One is, there is a really significant focus on higher education in this session. Right, we heard it in the governor's inaugural address, we heard it in the Senate President's inaugural address, and not not only higher education broadly and generating more access to higher education, but also providing, you know, free college education, higher ed, to a lot of people in this Commonwealth. How many people remains to be seen? How it's going to, you know, come into effect remains to be seen. But that is, I think, directly tied to this question, right? How do we make a broader teaching force? We make the credentialing, right, the education that's necessary in order to be one of our phenomenal teachers, more accessible to more people. And I'll also add that, you know, if there's anything that you're hearing tonight, and things we've already said, things we're going to say in the remaining time that we have together this evening, that's intriguing to you, that sounds like a good idea to you, I will tell you for sure, legislation doesn't pass just because one or two of us comes in and says, "Yeah, that's a good idea." We need you also to come in and say, "You know what? We need to pass this bill that's going to increase the diversity and inclusiveness of our teaching staff. We just need to pass it. We need to make it happen." We need to look at early ed as well. Also, Bill, a common start legislation the Senate passed last session that has not yet made it across the fully, the final finish line. That's part of this conversation, too, the higher education pieces, all the pieces that, you know, both of us frankly have been talking about in the K-12 space. We need your help to advocate for those things. And frankly, even even telling, even if you know that both of us support it, it actually does still help to send us an email or something to say, "You know what? We want you to pass this bill." Because then when when the Speaker of the House or the Senate President comes to us and says, you know, "Why? Why should we pass this?" We can say, "Well, we got hundreds of letters from all the people in Franklin saying they want to pass this bill, and these are all the reasons why they think it's important." And, you know, that's part of the partnership that we have, not only with each other, but with all of you, right? And that's how we make the magic happen.
While overall enrollment in schools is declining, for now, the number of children in special education is growing. Schools are seeing an increase in students with disabilities that are costly to address, including the costs of transportation and hiring staff such as behavioralists and psychologists. Franklin Public Schools has a legal and moral obligation to educate all children, and our district is proud to be inclusive of a wide variety of human differences, which makes us stronger together. We need to remain committed to making funding more equitable and to continue to fully fund services for students with the most needs. How can our administration make special education finance a priority, and how can you, as legislators, advocate for more funding for special education?
I will say, this has become one of my main pieces of conversation anytime I talk about education policy and education funding. Special education with the costs increasing and the number of students needing special education services, behavioral health services, accessing those services through the schools, this is part of nearly every conversation I have with regard to teaching our kids. And supporting families. Let's let's be real, that this is, it's not, it is mostly about students, it is also about families, it is also about our teachers, and our administration, and our staff in schools. So I hate to make it sound too simplistic, but budgets are statements of values. The administration can decide to put more money into special education. We could also decide that we need to go and take another look at that portion of our funding formula, and, you know, not necessarily the whole thing. I think there were a lot of things that we did, right? I think we're seeing across the board, again, every school district that I represent is struggling to fully fund special ed. That signifies to me that there's something that we need to take a look at, a closer look at. We passed the Student Opportunity Act in my first, not only my first term, but my first year of my first term. So it was very early in my legislative career. And so, you know, this is something that I I continue to hear more feedback about from folks all throughout the district in all all various facets of this particular issue. And certainly something that I'm having more and more conversations with on Beacon Hill, and frankly, my colleagues are all experiencing the same thing in their districts, right, with rising special education costs. It is part, not all, but part of the reason why I filed this bill to ensure, it's called an act, ensuring access to mental health supports in K-12 schools. It's a Senate Bill Three Forty-Six that would require the state to provide school mental health professionals at a rate of one to two-hundred-and-fifty, one professional per two-hundred-and-fifty students, with a minimum of one person per school. We know that our young people are in a mental health crisis. It's just, it's fact. It's just fact. We can create access points like Hey Sam, right, that you can text. That could be extremely helpful, and in fact, not only can be, but is proven to be extremely helpful. They have a one-hundred-percent-successful de-escalation rate to date, which is phenomenal. And we continue to work on that funding. There's a difference, of course, between being able to text and being able to see somebody face-to-face and have someone also observing you, right, who can say, "Hey, how you doing?" And so we have some work to do in this space.
What is the percentage of special education students today? When I was here, it was in the ten percent. Are you?
Eighteen?
Eighteen percent now. So you've you've seen an increase of eight percent in about ten or twelve years. Yeah, okay. I mean, you know, you do have a legal obligation to do it. We do have the circuit breaker funding that, you know, continues to reimburse school districts. I get it. That's the extraordinary expenses that are over and above a certain threshold. But, you know, that's a way the state is there to try and help you finance this. You do get some federal funding, minimal, along these lines, but, you know, you can't say no. And, you know, I also, you know, keep in mind, your obligation is either until that student gets a diploma, or that student turns twenty-two. And, you know, if you think it's a struggle for a school district, I can't tell you the number of parents who I've heard from who said, "My kid is turning twenty-two. There is no plan in place for what's going to happen after he or she turns twenty-two." And those extraordinary expenses now revert to the family, and they have to seek other forms of aid. So it's a, it's a real struggle, you know, finding the resources for that. But again, when we do our budgets, and when we talk about the things that we want to fund, as Senator Roush said, it's a statement of our values. I wish I were here, you know, a few days from now, because the House budget comes out on Wednesday, two days from now, and you're going to see an expression of our values. And then I will have until Friday at five o'clock to file my amendments. I already have them up here, and they are, they are ready to go. I should have them all filed by Thursday, and only emergency ones will be filed on Friday. And then we will be off for the school vacation week, not on vacation, not in sunny Florida, but working and preparing for the budget debate that is going to start on the twenty-fourth of April. And then that budget will be debated beginning like around eleven o'clock in the morning, and most of the sessions typically run till nine, ten. You'll get a couple midnights in there, and we will be exhausted by the end of that week, so don't count me on the twenty-eighth. But, you know, we're going to express our values, and I can tell you emphatically that special education is one of the hot topics, so I expect to see some increases in that particular area.
Thank you. Question five. The Operational Services Division, or OSD, falls under the Executive Office for Administration and Finance and has a variety of responsibilities, including setting tuition prices for approved special education programs in private schools. These schools accommodate students with needs that cannot be met by their current school district. The OSD has set a fourteen-percent inflation rate increase. For the past ten years, OSD has instituted a two-percent-average annual increase. This unprecedented fourteen-percent increase is straining local budgets across Massachusetts. This fourteen-percent increase comes out to over seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand for Franklin alone. What legislative action is in place or funding relief to mitigate the impact of this on districts? And can we expect the Joint Committee on Education to hold hearings?
I certainly do expect that you will hear hearings on this, and I think Senator Roush phrased it well, when she said this was a final act of the most popular governor in America. As he was walking out the door, whacked school districts across the Commonwealth with a fourteen-percent increase, but didn't affect his rating. But what we have is a, what's turning into somewhat of a crisis for many school districts. For you to absorb seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars is, that's a few teachers. The supplemental budget that Governor Healy filed on March seventeenth, it had seventy-five million dollars for some rate relief to assist school districts. I certainly expect that we will take that supplemental budget up. If not this week, then shortly after the budget, or may even be incorporated into the budget. We are, we are expected to be in a full session on Thursday of this week, and I'm hearing that that supplemental budget might be one of the items that we will take up. Everybody in the legislature is seeking aid for their respective districts in light of this fourteen percent. We did a huge forum with Norfolk County, Middlesex County, it was out at Newton, had to be over a hundred people there, superintendents, school committee members, legislators from throughout those districts, getting the details on how this fourteen-percent increase is impacting the districts, and really reaching out to us with some particular pieces of legislation that they'd like to see passed, but in the meantime, some additional funding that they'd like to see appropriated. And we will certainly put that as a, as a priority, because we know how it impacts each of the school districts. And, you know, there are other things coming down the pipeline that I don't know if you have thought about it, but I can see my dear friends on the council and the town administrator up here, but there'll be another vote coming for yet another override to finance a regional vocational technical high school that's going. I'm hearing from towns saying, "I don't know how we're going to afford putting this in place." So fasten your seatbelts. Going to be a bumpy ride, but you will not be the first town or the only town to face this. And if we put our heads together, we could get it done successfully. And you know that Senator Roush and I will be working hard on behalf of this community to make sure we can fill that gap as best as we can.
Absolutely. I just want to restate and kind of draw out the significance of this really stark increase, right? I mean, you heard, you heard it in the lead-in question, but I want to emphasize it, right? OSD rate increases have averaged under two percent every year. And then, as the former governor was walking out the door, he increased it sevenfold above the average in a single year with no additional funding.
Still the most popular governor.
Anyway, that is, that's wild. That that is just wild. And, you know, and I know all of you are, I see all your heads nodding, I can't see the folks on the, you know, on the Zoom, but I can see everybody in the room saying, "Yeah, that's wild." We know it, you know it, everybody seems to know it, except for the person who did it. And so we're here trying to figure out how to fill a ninety-plus-million-dollar funding gap to cover this shortfall, right? The governor has put forth a proposal that came in around seventy, seventy-five million, I'm hearing from various different sources, including the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents, that that's just not enough, right? And it's short by twenty million dollars, which, you know, that's not a small amount of money, that's a lot of money. And we have to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to come up with that money, right? And, you know, it's certainly not going to be just the two of us figuring out, it's going to, you know, take people in this room, people up on the hill, it'll be a lot of people to figure out how we're going to, we're going to fund this gap. But that is really significant. And there are a couple of tools that we do have in our budget, but I, before we get to the tools, right? At the same time, simultaneously, I'm hearing another really stark figure, which is that, you know, fifteen or twenty years ago, districts were spending roughly a fifth of their operating budgets on special education. And now, certain districts at least are reporting spending a third. That is a huge change. That is a huge change. So it's not just this particular moment that we're going to need. I'm not saying that that fourteen-percent increase wasn't necessary, right? If you talk to the, to the special education schools and, you know, they, they need that money. There's a reason that that, that increase came in. But that doesn't change the, the financial impact and the fiscal pain that sending districts, right, districts of origination are feeling right now. That's a really significant pinch. I have one district in, one school district in my Senate district that's looking at a ten-percent workforce reduction to cover the OSD fourteen-percent increase, which is massive. That is massive. So what are the tools, right? We've, you've heard Rep. Roy, and I mentioned a few of them already. We have the circuit breaker, the special education circuit breaker, that covers only a certain percentage and only a certain percentage of the overage over a certain amount, right? So that's not even going to come close to covering all the costs, right? There's a, this ninety million, ninety-two million plus amount that would be needed in this year to cover the gap, right? But that's just a one-time, one-time fix, right? We have to also start looking at longer-term fixes, because these costs aren't going to go away. They will still be here next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, and so on and so forth. So we have to get creative and figure out how we're going to provide long-term solutions that are perhaps in conjunction with the circuit breaker and the pothole funding and other sorts of things that we, that we need, including frankly, special education transportation, which is a huge portion of the cost.
Yeah, one more prepared question, and then time for closing statements and then citizen questions. The governor's fiscal year twenty-four budget was recently released. Could you provide background for us? For example, where are things headed, and how will this affect communities like Franklin?
So I, I don't know about you, Mr. Chair, but, but I certainly was not privy to the, you know, inner conversations had by the administration as to their budget preparations. So I got the book, it comes in a big book like this, and they ran, came around to all this, the legislative offices and delivered them, which is very nice, because as you can see, I like looking at things in hard copy. Makes it easier to write notes on them.
I don't.
And I'm the younger one. So anyway.
I can blow mine up.
That's, that's true. Your aging eyes, my friend. So I can't, you know, I can't say one way or another what, what, you know, what the background was on, on her budget proposals. I can say that the budget proposal that came from the governor reflects her tax reform package, which provides a billion dollars, well, which yields a billion dollars less in annual revenue. And not quite half, but close to half of that tax reform would yield to less taxes paid by the top one percent of earners in the state, right? So it's a, close to a billion dollars of a break, and four hundred million annually go to the very highest earners in the state. On principle, do we need, for example, a state tax reform? Happen to think yes. Do I happen to agree with the, you know, with the specific proposal put forth by the governor? I think we could probably do that a little bit differently. So we, we have pieces that, for example, the Hey Sam funding, right? That text line, youth mental health text line that has a one-hundred-percent success rate, not funded in the governor's proposed budget. But that's why the budget is a proposal. That comes from the governor, and it goes to the House, right? You heard Representative Roy say the House budget's going to be released this week. The Senate budget will come in May. Then we do this, staying up until all hours in the night to make sure we get the deliberations finished on time. And then it goes to a conference committee, right, the chiefs of our respective Ways and Means Committees and the ranking minority members, they get together and hash out the differences, and then we send a comprehensive package over to the governor for her signature or veto, or line item vetoes, which does happen with some frequency. So, although she's the new governor, so I, you know, we don't actually know what this, right? She's, she's just got here. So we're going to see, you know, this is the first time that we're going through a budget process together, with all of us in these respective roles. So, so we will see how it goes. I will say there are some really wonderful things in the budget, right? She did put in the She did put in the funding for the Student Opportunity Act on schedule. Again, that's not the full funding for the full amount that was passed through legislation in 2019. That is the yearly increase, right, that comes in every year. We're in the middle of that rollout. I think we have three more years to go, two or three. I'm seeing heads shaking, yes, so that's good. Three more years to go, right, until we get to the total full funding. But it is fully funded as to where we are supposed to be right now. That's good, right? There's, not on an education side, but this is the first time ever that a governor has put a full 1% of our state budget into the environment, climate action. That's huge, right? Students can't learn if they don't have clean air to breathe and clean water to drink and, you know. So there's, there are a lot of good pieces in that budget. And, you know, and we're gonna do our best to make it even better.
So what does this budget mean for Franklin? Means an increase of $153,120 in Chapter 70. Don't go all woo-hoo. I know you, it's not a ton of money, but that's what the minimal amount of aid is. We'll certainly try to increase that in the House and Senate budgets, but don't expect it to be very sizable. The unrestricted general government aid is going to increase by 57,246 under the governor's proposal. We'll see what we can do there. And, you know, I won't go through each of the line items, but, you know, we have funds in all of the accounts that I had listed earlier today. I'll talk about a couple of the amendments that I'm working on. Actually, one amendment and one program that was part of the 2020, 2022 Clean Energy and Offshore Wind Legislation. A piece that was put into that legislation was part of a bill that I had filed on credentialing. We talked about workforce development earlier in this meeting. Well, this is a financial incentive for traditional public school districts to provide credentials to students. And we're piloting it in the offshore wind industry because we're preparing kids today for jobs that we don't even know. They, they don't even exist, but there's a whole industry that's being developed. So we're offering $750 for each credential that a school district produces. So if you produce a class of 20 kids and a credentialing program takes seven to 10 weeks, for each credential you get 750 bucks for 20 kids, that's $15,000 you can do. And if you can run that program several times a year, there's an, an area where you can get money. Not many folks are taking advantage of it. We put $3 million in the, in the budget to cover that particular program. So why don't you be first in? You can send them down to Beaver Pond to dive and figure out what it's like to put a turbine in. But most of it's classroom training. And another program that I'm gonna file as a, as a budget amendment, the legislature has been funding an early college program for students throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we have quadrupled the expenditure on that. When, when we first got involved, there were 2,000 students participating in this program. This year, we're trying to ramp it up to 8,000 students across the Commonwealth. And I'm gonna file an amendment to the budget, which is an act requiring or calling for college and high school programs. We want to bring that early college program to all 351 districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And, you know, schools like Franklin High, you know, have AP courses, which are college and high school type examples. But you have a, a private university right down the street that can partner with you to offer more college experience to the students here. The beauty of that, you think the cost in, in K-12 are expensive. Having put three through college, I'm looking at this fantastic beach house that I could have had, but won't because it's in their heads. But they can dream and, and they can dream large. But this college and high school and early college program, the goal of it is to give a kid an associate's degree before they get their high school diploma. That's two years of college under their belt that they don't have to pay for. And we're working on the transferability of those credits so that they can save substantial amounts of money themselves and their families and get a leg up on the college experience. Because I talked earlier about 72% of the jobs require a credential beyond a high school diploma. Well, let's work and try to help students achieve that. And that'll be one of the budget amendments that I will be filing on Thursday.
My grandson's doing that right now in the pantry.
Bang.
Awesome.
That's what we like. His parents must be very happy.
Oh, he is.
I didn't, I live once.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You just did.
I just held myself back a number of times. Thank you both for taking the time to address these important issues. As we discussed at the beginning, each of you have five minutes for closing statements. Although Rep. Roy may already have yours. And then we all do citizen Q and A.
Yeah, what did, where did I take an extra five minutes? Did I?
That sounded so, you know, closing.
Keep going, you're on a roll.
I'll just say again, and I'll repeat, that I got into government because of education. I, I always remind my colleagues that I live in the community where Horace Mann was born. And it's no mistake that Horace Mann learned and educated himself using the books that were provided by Benjamin Franklin in 1784. And he used those books to, to get into Brown University and go on to be the father of public education. So coming from this community, I take education very seriously. It's what drove me originally into government, serving 10 years on the school committee. But it's also what drove me to the State House because I thought there was more that could be done. I don't look like a classic first-generation college student, but I can tell you I am a first-generation college student. And I know what an education did for me and my family. And I want to see that gift be given to every student across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I was born in September, early in September. And my mother used to tell me that on your birthday is usually the first day of school and that's the greatest gift you can ever get. I didn't believe a word of it, but I now look today that, you know, that experience, getting a bachelor's degree, getting a law degree and being able to participate in a practice of law for 28 years, translated well into what is now happening at the State House. You know, my committee assignment for the last two sessions has been telecommunications utilities and energy, working on the major climate legislation that is passing through Massachusetts. Massachusetts is a, a nation and world leader in climate change and preventing global warming. And we are in the birth of an offshore wind industry. So some great things are happening here in Massachusetts. You look around the country and I say to myself every single day, thank God. Thank God I'm from Massachusetts because it's frightening what's going on out there. And we need to be strong, we need to be smart, we need to be capable and we need to be leaders to bring this nation out of this funk that we're in. And Massachusetts led in the revolution in 1776. And this is just one more revolution that we're going to win. So I thank you all for being here and participating at home. For you that are in public service, it's, it's a great calling and I appreciate everything you do. I appreciate the level of communication. There isn't an unfamiliar face in this room at all. I don't know what faces are on Zoom out there, but really grateful for your collaboration and cooperation and look forward to continuing our work together. How's that?
I will not take five minutes. I, because I'm really excited to take your questions, but I'll certainly echo that. I also don't have an unfamiliar face in this room, which is really exciting. And it is a real honor to represent Franklin in the State Senate. I'm the only mom of kids under 10 in the entirety of the Senate. That is true for the first time in my service this year. And that is not something I take lightly. That is something I take extremely seriously. And it is a big part of why I asked to be on the Education Committee this session. Because both, both of our kids, we are public, I'm a product of public schools. And both of our kids are in the public schools and I am a firm believer in public education. And we have some continued work to do in this space as is evident by the questions we've already addressed this evening and by the many, many bills that are filed in this space. But the bills are really just one part of it, right? The, the bills are a part, the budget is a part, the implementation is a part, the partnership between local and state and also our federal partners. All three levels of government, really particularly in education, work together in order to make that happen. And none of that happens, whether we're talking about early ed, K-12, higher ed, voc ed, right? Pick your level of, you know, your space of education. None of it happens without frankly, all of us. Every single one of us here, every single one of us in the Zoom and a whole bunch of people who weren't able to make it tonight, right? Because like I said earlier, we can file the bills. We do file the bills, right? We file the bills, we file the budget amendments. We have the conversations with the members of the administration. We have conversations with all of you as local elected leaders and both elected leaders and, and non-elected leaders and people who care about communities, about families, about kids and teachers and staff. And it is, it's a multifaceted space, right? With needs of workers, needs of students, funding concerns. But all of the different pieces, all of the things that we need to do, it doesn't happen. It's not gonna happen without all of us getting involved and all of us paying attention and all of us doing our various roles, right? We're gonna file things, we're gonna keep advocating for you, for the kids in this town, for the teachers in this town, for the administration in this town. And I invite you, I encourage you to help us get that done. Because we cannot do it alone. We, I mean, not alone, each one of us individually, we work as a team. But as a team, we, we are, I think, a really great, you know, maybe one of the better team in the building. But anyway, we are a great team and we can't do it without your help. And part of that help is not just supporting the things that you see or going, right? Or telling us the things that you see that are proposals that aren't enough or that need to be tweaked, but also telling us what you're seeing on the ground that doesn't yet have a legislative proposal or a budget funding component, right? Because you're on the ground, you're seeing it. If we don't know about it, we can't help. So tell us and then maybe we can try to do something about it. And with that, I just want to thank everybody here. Thank all the members of the school committee and, and school administration. My dear friend, Mr. Franklin himself, Jeff Roy.
So I guess we'll start here in person if anyone had any questions. Sure, if you, I'll just, if you want to ask it, I'll just kind of yell it again so that the folks at home can hear it.
Okay. Oh, there's a mic over here.
Oh, there you go. You actually got to walk down. This is like, let's make a deal.
You can do that.
Yes. So will there be any education money available from the million-year tax this year?
Yes. So the, the, I guess it okay if I repeat the, the question is, what, what's going on with the fair share money and is any of it going to education? The fair share amendment passed on the ballot in November 22, which I think everybody knows about. That is anticipated to bring in roughly a billion dollars. It's the first year of its implementation, so no one knows exactly how much money, but the, the rough figure is about a billion dollars of revenue each year, including the upcoming fiscal year. The governor's budget proposal takes, and I will say, in the language itself, all of the money that comes in because of that amendment must go to education or transportation. That's it. Those are the only two places it goes. Education, transportation, boom. The governor proposed creating a, a trust fund, basically, a separate fund where all of that fair share money will go. And then she divided it up with a proposal and it's split almost evenly in her proposal. So we'll see what the, what the House proposal is and what the Senate proposal will be. But for sure, the, the short answer is yes. Some as-of-yet-not-finalized amount of money from fair share revenues will go to education.
Can I make a comment? On Friday, Governor Healy is gonna be on Jim and Marjorie on Public Radio, 89.7. They're on from 11 to 2. I'm not sure when she's gonna be on. She's gonna be on for an hour taking questions. It'll be great for people's call.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks. So in follow-up to that, I didn't hear you, has that fair share money been allocated yet in any way? Is that included in any of the ways we were talking about to support education? And I thought that money in education and fair share was mostly for higher ed, is that correct?
No.
No.
Is that misunderstood?
No, it's, you will see the allocations when the budget is done. So our budget's coming out Wednesday. I'm going in tomorrow to get a glimpse of what we're gonna be looking at. Then we'll have another meeting on Wednesday. So I can't tell you exactly what the allocations are, but it is specifically targeted to education and transportation. And so we'll hammer out a proposal, the governor hammered out a proposal, the Senate will give a proposal and then you'll see something hopefully by July 1st.
On that same line, now the tax cuts, those won't affect the money from the fair share, is that correct?
Well, I, I don't know if you, if you do math, all right?
Jeff, can we just repeat the question?
So the, the question is, will the tax cuts have an impact on the fair share revenue? Yeah, and that's, that's a conversation that Senator Roush and I had just a few weeks ago saying, you know, we're raising a billion dollars from the fair share amendment and the governor has proposed to cut a billion dollars through tax relief. What's the point of all that work that we did to pass the fair share amendment if you're just gonna hand it back to people who don't really need it? So that'll be, I'm sure that'll be part of the discussions about the allocations.
And if you have buckets, if you have buckets and you have money here and you have money there, there you go. How can you switch the buckets through?
So, so let's be clear, right? There's the fair share money that's gonna come in and as of yet, we don't have it, right? It's not, it's, well, it is April, but it is not yet tax day, right? Not all of the taxes are in, right? But the, again, the estimate is roughly a billion dollars. The governor's proposal for how to divide up that money is roughly half to education, broadly speaking, education, and roughly half to transportation, right? As I mentioned earlier in this evening, the governor's budget proposal reflects her tax reform package, which cuts that billion dollars back out, right? Now, it's not that particular pot, it's a billion dollars from the whole pie, right? We are not the federal government. We cannot operate at a deficit, the same way that you all can operate at a deficit at the town lettable. We have a pie. It has to balance every year. The voters in '22 said we want to increase the size of that pie by a billion or by some estimates, maybe more, every year, right? That was the fair share amendment, that was the point, right? The tax relief proposal that came from the governor, and I, I will say, I sit on the revenue committee as well, so I've asked these questions already during the hearing that we just had a couple of weeks ago on that reform package from the governor. Shrink the pie by a billion dollars. Where? That depends, right? That depends on which thing you're gonna cut. Because we can't create money from nothing, right? We have, we have, see some faces in the audience going, yeah, it would be nice to be able to create money from nothing. But I think we all know that, that can't happen, right? So, so we get the pie, we get one pie and we have to divide it up. If we give tax relief, and I'm not saying tax relief is bad. There are some really important pieces of tax relief that I think we need to provide, right? But any tax relief that we provide, any, any tax reform that yields decreased revenues for the state means we have less money to divide up in the budget. That's it, right? It's just, it's that simple. It is that simple. That's it, right? It's just, it's that simple. It is that simple, right? So, I don't know, where would you propose to cut from, right? It might, yeah. Right? The initial budget proposal did not have universal school meals in it. Doesn't have the million dollars for Hey Sam it. These are the, these are, what are you gonna cut, right? If you shrink the pie, you have to cut something. That's it. It is literally that simple at the 50,000-foot, you know, forest view. When you get into the trees and the twigs and all their leaves, right? Then you gotta figure out specifically where is that money gonna effectively get pulled from, right? And the short answer is, we don't actually know the answer to that question right now, because we have not finalized any sort of tax reform package, and we also have not even seen the House budget proposal yet, let alone the Senate, which follows. So there's a lot left to do in the legislative process before we can give you a more concrete answer to that question, unfortunately. But ask us next year.
Ask me on Friday, because we're gonna do our tax relief package on Thursday.
I'll call you up.
Call me anything, but don't call me Stu.
Think we have one over at the mic, Camille?
Yes, this is a question as a citizen, and each of your closing comments couldn't have set up my question better. Senator Roush, are you worried? Senator Roush talking about people being on the ground and giving you ideas, and Rep. Roy talking about Massachusetts being the first. I teach in a district that's not your jurisdiction, but the kids are kids are kids. I teach sophomores, and about six weeks ago, I gave them an article, and my intention was, them to formulate a counterargument. And the article was about mandatory national service. And 77% of them were for it. The article talked about increasing AmeriCorps for 18 to 26-year-olds, not just military, but working in municipalities, working in hospitals, working with the homeless. And I was blown away. Our kids are community-minded. Our kids want to give service. Our kids are also extraordinarily anxious about life skills. About, some of them have told me, I know how to solve for X, but I don't know how to file taxes. And I wanna share with you a couple things that they said. These are from their thesis statements. I fully expected to hear, like, I got my own life, I don't need to be doing this. Not at all. 77% benefit the community, clean up and rejuvenate America, reduce homelessness and the labor shortage, fill job vacancies in municipalities, promote diversity of experiences, promote diversity of connections, create unity towards the common cause of improving our country. Teach life skills, foster personal growth, provide pathways to careers, aid students in post-secondary goals, offer financial assistance, offer real-world experience early on, create a passage from school to career, reduce stress on high school students to decide a career immediately. The kids who disagreed with it said things like, people don't have to serve in order to contribute to society. And the answer is not always in service, but in better public policy. These are 10th graders. They want to make their communities better. So this was about a national service, but why not Massachusetts? Why not start Massachusetts having service for our 18 to 26-year-olds to get credit for college, to get job experience, and as they say, to help create unity in our country that's been so divided? Thank you.
Can I just add something? In Belmont, a freshman Emerson College young man by the name of Angus. He just got on the town council, or town meeting. He wanted to make a difference. He chose in his freshman year, because he knew he wanted to do this in his town. And I just was so impressed. And he made it. He knocked on doors, he took a three-quarter horseload of the first semester so that he could be out there knocking on doors and doing this. And I was like, this is the best situation for a young man of 18 to get out there in his community. He went to meetings, he went to, he was so up on all the issues and what he thought could be better in the town. And I thought this was just incredible. So, thank you.
Well, I wanna share with you, I wanna share with you an 18-year-old who grew up in Milford, Massachusetts, and was the youngest elected official in the town of Milford who ran the town meeting. You're looking at him. And my first debate on the town meeting floor was on the school budget, and how important it was to educate. And I still have the newspaper clipping where they have the quotes about how important education is. That was 10 years ago, but... Well, look at, I flunked math.
So let's take one more comment, and then I wanna address Camille's question.
Camille, you're right, you have the pulse right there. Because I asked my eighth graders a month ago...
Would you ask them today?
What problems they wanna solve. And it's just a warm-up question, really, and they were profound, to say the least, you know. And they weren't, I mean, they were thoughtful, but profound. Climate, more diversity, you know, things that, you know, as a history teacher and as a teacher in general, it's exactly what I wanted to hear.
So I wanna start by saying, your students obviously have fantastic teachers. So, so thank you for doing that, right, as a public school parent myself. They do, they do, but that education process doesn't happen without you in the classroom. And so many other teachers in the classroom that are working so hard in so many places in so many ways to educate our kids. As, you know, as Jeff said earlier, it is one of, if not the most noble profession out there. It's an interesting idea. I don't know that it's possible to do in just Massachusetts, but it's an interesting idea. I guess, Camille, start with having a conversation about it and see if, you know. Honestly, it's not the first time I've heard this idea. I've also been kind of poking around about, you know, how do we get, how do we support more kids, you know, going into AmeriCorps or similar, you know, they've been called gap year programs, but it's not, it's not really quite the same thing, right? Some type of service that is not military service. And I don't have the answer, but I think it's an idea, it's an interesting idea, and I think it's worthy of further conversation, so we'll see what we can find out. But the, so I wanna, so I wanna, that's what I wanna get to next, which is that you don't, not you specifically, but students in general need not wait, right? Right? This 18-year-old who just got elected to town meeting in Belmont, you have to wait until you're 18 in order to run for, you know, for a town meeting in any town. But you need not wait to get involved, right? And in fact, if you are a young person who is listening to this, or you are a parent of a young person, or perhaps a teacher of a young person, and you want to encourage them to get involved, there are lots of different ways. For example, if you are a 16 or 17-year-old, guess what? You can't vote yet. But Franklin independently could say, you know what? We want 16 and 17-year-olds to be able to vote in our town, in our local elections. And I have the bill, I'm the lead sponsor for that bill, it's called the Empower Act. If anybody's interested in that, it creates a local option for municipalities in the state to say, you know what? We want 16 and 17-year-olds to have the opportunity to vote while they are still in their hometowns so that they can set that pattern, right? So that when they go off into the world, they already know what it feels like to vote and be engaged in democracy, right? And there's all sorts of data to back up this proposal, right? So that's one thing, right? Another thing, we have, I mean, in fact, what led to the creation of Hey Sam is a legislative teen-focused town hall that my staff and I run, that's called Student Speak. We have, with the various shifts and things that are hybrid and things that are remote, we are in the process of getting that back up and running. That is a great opportunity for young people to come in and get involved with me and me and my staff, and work with us. We are also in the process of setting up a specific youth advisory council. I have a small business advisory council tool that has already led to positive legislative shifts that better support small businesses all throughout the Commonwealth. And we have several small business owners from right here in Franklin that sit on that council, right? This is an opportunity for young people to get involved, and there are plenty more, plenty more, right? You can, in fact, young people can show up and testify at school committee hearing, right? Young people can show up, testify before the town council. Young people can get involved in lots and lots and lots of different ways. And I have to tell you, from a legislative perspective, some of the most powerful and influential advocacy I hear is from young people, even younger than eighth grade.
I wanna touch on two quick things. So City Year, which AmeriCorps was designed on, started here in Massachusetts. Alan Casey from Brookline is the one who started that. So I wrote down his name to call him to say, how can we get a statewide service program together? Because he'll know how to do it. In terms of student engagement, I did a civics day at Medway High School probably four or five years ago, and talked to the students. They put 500 kids in an auditorium. And said, you know, if you ever have an idea, most bills are products of ideas or problems that you're trying to solve. And about six months later, a young lady who was a junior at Medway High School had done a paper on the lack of period products in her school. And she thought that this, just like toilet paper and paper towels, that, you know, hygiene products should be available in the restrooms at all the schools across the Commonwealth. So I said, come on in, let's sit down, I read the paper, and we ended up filing a bill. It was in my name, but I said, look at your, I want you to work on this. She came in and she testified at the hearings, she wrote letters, she wrote position papers, she attended the rallies that were taking place in front of the State House. It didn't pass in the first session we filed it, but we refiled it. She went on to become a statewide advocate for this bill. She actually did a TED Talk on this particular experience of doing this bill. So we do have a lot of engaged young people, and I love the fact that you are prodding them and pushing them and trying to get them even more engaged, because, you know, our future depends on new leaders emerging from this group. So keep up your great work, and I want you to know that we value that work, and we value the input of the young people in our districts.
This is how much of a team we are. My first thought also was, hey, I gotta call in Alan Casey, and see what he thinks of this.
Thank you. So speaking of young people, I just wanna remind people that even the youngest, as someone on the ground, you can get the younger people involved as well. I teach in the garden. Earth Day is coming up, they love to plant, they love to clean up, they love to be part of it, and they are not too little for anything. K, one, two. Their leadership skills are evolved at this age, and they do wanna be involved, you know, around their homes, around their fields, around their communities. One young lady that I actually had the pleasure of hearing speak, here speaking, excuse me, not that long ago, for disability justice is 13. I heard her at the National Education Leadership Conference a few weeks ago. Her name is Helena Lourdes Donato Saff, so Helena Saff. She is 13 years old, she's been speaking since she was nine. And she speaks on disability justice, and she does this because she has multiple learning disabilities and has been put down by teachers and kids on all of her disabilities and how she's accommodated. She is one of the most sought-after speakers in the educational world right now. She has, she talks about her intersectionality. She has, she's a dark-skinned black girl, she's adopted, she has two fathers, one who's raised in poverty, one is a scholar. She's an activist, a feminist, and regularly speaks to education on the topics that kids can tackle, tough topics. She has an anti-bullying stance that comes from some harassment she herself has been party to. And I will tell you, one of the best things when I hear that we're all talking about funding and how this is about kids, we're in the business of kids, and then I'll ask my question, is that...
I thought that was the question.
No, what she says is, she deserves to have an education not because of her disabilities. She deserves to have an education because she is a child in our classroom. Which I think is huge. She started her speech by coming out and saying, educators, I just wanna say, I love you. So young kids can do great things. Now, my question is, with the uptick in aggressive behaviors of students to other students and students to staff, and it goes from pre-K all the way up through college, would you be willing to give more funding to schools to address these issues? We just talked about cuts. These are on-the-ground, ongoing issues that don't just have to do with mental health issues, but these are important issues that nobody wants to talk about.
I wanna hear a little more about what it is, and just get some more detail, so maybe we can make a time to talk offline and understand more about what's going on, and what you're experiencing, what your colleagues are experiencing, and within, you know, various different school districts.
I think we hear it in the news, we hear a six-year-old who brought a gun to school. I think we're just hearing things in general, that there's just violence, work, I guess I'll say workplace violence from, towards educators. And there needs to be, in my opinion, there needs to be some more research and some more resources. And would, you know, is any of that being discussed at your level? I guess, is the question.
I mean, we certainly, somewhat, I would say some, the short answer is somewhat. I know we're running a little bit short on time, so the short answer is somewhat. You know, the incident that you referenced about the six-year-old, we all know that wasn't in Massachusetts. We don't have control over things that are happening outside of our Commonwealth. So I'm really focused on what's happening here. What's happening here in our state, in our district, in this town, and what can we as legislators do to continue to be helpful? And so, you know, we can have, I think, a more robust conversation with a little more time about this issue.
Briefly, on aggression, I've heard plenty of aggression on the athletic fields, and poor athletic officials getting assaulted. And I did file a piece of legislation making it a specific crime to assault an athletic official. And I'm working with the folks at the MIAA to get that bill over the goal line, no pun intended.
I do wanna circle back to your, you know, young kids can tackle big topics, and just to say, you know, I went to pick up my kids from aftercare, and one of my third grader's friends came up to me and said, you're, you know, you're his mom, right? And I said, yes. Where is this gonna go? And he said, and this friend had seen a sign in town that she thought was discriminatory against women, and she wanted to know who to talk to about that. And so she asked me, and I said, well, I don't know what sign it is, but I gave her some places where she might go and have the next conversation. She was like, okay, and she just, she went on to, she's nine, right? She went on to do eight, nine, something like that, right? Went on to do it, right? This is, you know, this is part of why civics education and other things that we do are so important, right? Because we, okay, you got a problem, you wanna go fix it, here's a pathway to maybe get it done.
I know that there's been, I hear a lot of parents on fields, you know, at schools, more discipline, this and that. And I have a lot of dedicated friends, and I'm not a publicist for schools, so I know, you know, there's been, a lot put in place recently to, you know, make sure that sort of justice is in place, and make sure that people are meeting where they're at, and giving them the tools they need, and it's more than just a, you know, you're suspended kind of thing, which makes sense. And I think that the lines between discipline and mental health get kind of mixed because we're in this sort of tumultuous time. So I think that that's, you know, I have this discussion with some friends, and I might still bring it up, because it kind of speaks to kind of what Camille was saying too, is, I think the younger Gen Xers and the older millennials, the parenting generation that is us right now... that is us right now are, are not civic-minded because we didn't grow up having civics. People don't know what to do, where to go, how to change the sign and whatnot. So we've tossed around this idea where sort of a jury duty and the shortage of substitute teachers that maybe, like a parent, sort of a year in the district, you're on the list, and you get a prize, and you get a bump, and maybe we get to do a little...
Service.
The white swan, I think. Because I know sometimes if parents are not aware of what it takes to properly institute some sort of a resource justice, you know?
Excuse me.
I remember talking earlier about the college credit courses and things like that. I remember coming to town and Superintendent Chikir during the interview process, some of the most exciting things I heard him talk about were, you know, we can talk to local colleges, we can get a little bit of a head start with what parents are having to pay for colleges and this and that. So I, I would have to assume, I know we're down like one assistant vice chancellor, vice principal, basically. So I know that like these discipline and these concerns with the mental health of children and trying to get everybody healthy and able to learn can get in the way of things like that. So I wrote down your bill number, and 346, one chance for a recalcitrant kid. That is dynamite. Look, things like that are really, you know, make a difference. So what is worth, I think, a substitute teacher jury duty pool for older parents is not a bad idea.
What do you think?
I'm in. Just stick to my lunch duty and...
See how it goes. Ready, go.
During the pandemic, I'm all in Massachusetts duty, and I was like, wow, this is interesting.
All right. So being cognizant of the time, I know that online there was some questions. I just want to summarize it really quick because I know that we're running over. So some of the bills that you've mentioned focus mainly on higher ed or secondary education. Are there any initiatives for early education?
Yeah, sure. I mentioned one earlier. It's called the Common Start Bill. The Senate did pass it last session. It's specifically focused on early education. It's a pretty big bill, so I won't try to summarize it, you know, or get into the nuances of it because it's just, it's just too big and I'm not the lead file on it. But the shorter version of it is, it's trying to make early education more affordable, more accessible. That's it. And that's the goal of the bill. There's a whole Common Start Coalition. You can Google it and find it. Again, it did, it did pass the Senate last session and, you know, and it was refiled again this term because it did not make it over the ultimate finish line, get enacted into law just yet. So that, that is certainly part of it. And that's in it, that's, you know, I think the, the leading piece of, of legislation that's been filed, but there are a variety of additional pieces. I myself have successfully passed a couple in the past via budget amendments and other things to support our early education workforce and, you know, and make some other various changes to things that will enhance access to early ed. And frankly, again, you know, I'm, I'm not even two years out of daycare, so, right? With, with, from a parent's perspective, so, you know, for everyone who's paying that, paying those childcare bills, I feel you. And, you know, and, and that is, we have the highest early education costs in the country, right? In the whole country. It is the most, this is the most expensive place in the nation to send your kid to daycare. That is ridiculous. That is ridiculous, right? And, and we even, not in Franklin, but in, in some communities still in this Commonwealth, they still don't even have full-day tuition-free kindergarten, right? So yeah, the short answer is yes. The big piece of legislation is called the Common Start Bill. And there are a number of, you know, attendant pieces, both of legislation and funding proposals that factor in.
All right. Last one, and then we're out of here.
Do I have to go down there or can I just shout from here?
You can just shout it. It'll repeat it.
So I know on the federal level, we deal with Freedom of Information Act stuff. And I know on the state level, we deal with public record requests. And it seems like from talking to staff, we're, we're getting inundated and getting a lot of time spent dealing with what I think many of us would consider pretty frivolous requests that are tying their hands, having them focus on issues instead of, like, our superintendent's rule, for example, should not be spending 20 hours a week dealing with finding emails and wondering, worrying about a book that's going to offend somebody in some library. He's got a pretty big job to do, right? So is there a way, like your level, that you can offer any sort of help or, you know, because, you know, his hands get tied, I'm sure Jamie's hands get tied. This is obviously a very just, frankly, problem, right? But we seem to be in this world where people feel like I can just tie their hands by requesting all of this garbage instead of, I would probably just put that overall here in a pile and tell get to when I can, but I got a school department to run, but I'd probably get in trouble if I did that, right? So is there anything that you guys can offer to say, "This is just out of control, and we need to rebook some of these things so that these staff can get back to actually doing what they need"?
I got a bill on that.
Yeah. So the question was, do we, is there a way that we can fix the Freedom of Information law in Massachusetts to get rid of frivolous, frivolous requests? Well, I will tell you, and it was probably five years ago, that we did a major overhaul of the Freedom of Information process in Massachusetts. And I was under the understanding that that addressed a lot of these concerns. So to the, I would urge you, first of all, to take a look at what we did, and I will try to dig that up for you, to show you what, what changes were made to that particular set of laws. And it, you know, restricted how many requests people could do and, you know, the, the time period within which to respond. So thought it had addressed it, but Becca has a bill, so perhaps she can address any other outstanding concerns.
So, so something that, that doesn't come up very often, the question again is about the public records law here in Massachusetts and what, what about frivolous repeated requests for public records that are detracting from the other very good and important work that our administrators are doing? So at the time when, when Jeff was in the legislature and passing the reform to the public records law, I was a secretariat-level attorney at the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and I led the team for the biggest secretary in the state to write the book on how to implement that revised public records law. So this one I know well.
Give that book to them.
It is, that book is a public document that you can, or at least used to be able to access off of the UHHS website. But the, there are pieces in the law that aim to address frivolous requests. And the way that that law works is basically, if you think you've got a frivolous request, you can refuse to answer it. And then it goes to the, the secretaries of the Commonwealth's office in, in his records division, and, and there's a record supervisor that basically hears those effectively appeals. This is not, Franklin, you're right, that Franklin is not alone in facing this particular issue. It's also come up within the context of the open meeting law and filing repeated complaints about alleged open meeting law violations that, that then go to the Attorney General. So there, there's sort of two parallel laws that we're working with at the state level that have led to kind of similar concerns. I do have a bill on it. I'm happy to talk with whoever wants to talk about it offline. I don't have those particular bill numbers in front of me because they were not sent to the Education Committee. They went to the State Administration Committee. So, but I'm always happy to talk about public records, and it is, it's a, it's a thorny, nuanced, complex problem. We want people to be able to have access to what should be public documents, and we also want people to be able to do the work as the superintendent and the town admin and the various folks, you know, in, in doing public service in, in various different ways. Delicate balance.
To my point, Becca, that we're not providing them the resources that they need in order to answer all of those requests. I get it, but some of those are needed. There are obviously things that, you know, people have a right to get access to, right?
Right.
The frivolous ones, the ones that take up huge, huge amounts of staff time, that we are not providing, that we're not lawyering them up, we're not giving them tons of money for admin staff, and they're just bogged down from what I'm hearing in that kind of stuff. And I think the people filing this stuff know they're bogged down.
So there is, I, there, there is already built into the law a limit as to how much you can, you as a requister can ask for and the work that is attendant to that particular request that public bodies are obligated to respond to. I think it's four hours' worth of work.
Send a link to the book.
And beyond that, there's a, there is a funding component, and the requister has to pay. So I'm happy to get into more detail offline.
All right. Thank you.
Send a link to the book.
Link to the book. I don't even know if it's still up there, but, or they've probably revised it since then. It's been a few years.
Thank you very much, Senator Becca Roush and State Representative Roy for coming out tonight and staying a little bit later than anticipated. And I'm sure if anyone had any more questions, you could grab them on the way out the door, and we'll see you, and we'll see you next year. See you next one.
Terrific. Thank you, everybody.
We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
This program was made possible by your Franklin friends and neighbors. Good folks just like you. Thanks for supporting Franklin TV. And thanks for watching.